Thank you. The notice of this meeting pursuant to the Up and Public Meetings Act NJSA 10:4-10 has been complied with and shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting. Ms. Roa, please call the roll.
Trustee Anderson?
Here.
Trustee Beauties? Trustee Finkelstein?
Here.
Trustee McLean?
Here.
Trustee Oris?
Yeah.
Trustee Pelori? Trustee Power?
Here.
Trustee Raja?
Yeah.
Trustee Sika?
Yeah.
Trustee Taffet?
Here.
Chairman Power, we do have a quorum.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Roa, and welcome to you.
Thank you.
Our new Assistant Secretary to the Board and to the President. And at this point, we don't have a representative from the county, but we expect to have one soon. Okay. This meeting is has many challenges. Therefore, I would like to request that all persons making motions and seconding those identify themselves so that we can include it in the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 16, 2020 meeting of the County College?
I'll move that, Sika.
Second, Bob Morris.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carried. Thank you. Ms. Roa, do we have any correspondence?
Chairman Power, we do not have any correspondence.
Thank you. Dr. McCormick, do we have a presentation?
Chairman Power, we do. Happy New Year to all. And in our past practice as a board, we have been going once a year to each of our two centers, one in New Brunswick and one in Perth Amboy. We would have been in Perth Amboy in October, but of course now we're having our meetings on Zoom. And so you didn't get a chance to see the beautiful center and to hear from our recently appointed new director Angelo Abreu about all the things that are going on there. So I've invited Mr. Abreu to come today to tell you all about the great things happening at the Perth Amboy Center. So Angelo, it's all yours.
Thank you so much, Dr. McCormick, and I would just want to say good morning to everyone, including our Board of Trustees members. It is a great pleasure and honor to be with you this morning to give you a brief update about some of the things that we're working on at the Perth Amboy Center. I just need the PowerPoint.
It's coming.
It's coming. Okay. Thank you. So thank you so much, Mark, for that introduction. My name is Angelo Abreu and I have been recently appointed as of April of last year to join the amazing team that exists over at our Perth Amboy Center. Next slide. And I wanted to just give a nice overview and also kudos to the staff members, many that have been working at the center for a very long time, and also some new members that have joined us, including our peer mentors. So I just wanted to say kudos. Throughout this time dealing with not only a pandemic but going remote, our staff here at the Perth Amboy Center has really been able to pivot and change gears and really move with just getting everything put together so that our students can find our services and reach out to us virtually or here onsite at our location in Perth Amboy. Next slide. So the mission of the center is really committed to providing comprehensive student enrollment support services to culturally diverse populations here in Perth Amboy, but also within the surrounding area. At the center, we try to emphasize the implementation of educational and training programs, developing and maintaining collaborative partnerships, both internally at the college, but also externally within the local community to hopefully enhance that student experience. We do that through providing different levels of academics and social engagement. Students can register for introductory and advanced level courses. And I listed some of the major areas or academic areas that, you know, are, I guess, fan favorites of some of our students that take classes here. So we offer, you know, all levels of English as a second language, English Composition 1 and 2, different levels of mathematics, social sciences with criminal justice, psychology, sociology, as well as our humanities. Our students have the flexibility of being able to take classes during the day, the evening, and on Saturday mornings prior to COVID, but we've been able to work as one college to be able to register students across any of our locations since we've been remote or virtual since the pandemic started. But we can't leave out the social engagement piece with our Perth Amboy Center Club, which is titled United Students of Perth Amboy, that it provides an array of academic, cultural, and recreational activities for every semester, for every student through our academic advisor and assistant director Audrey Davis-Dunning. So kudos to her and the entire team that supports our students. In terms of virtual and/or remote services, since the pandemic has started, all of our academic advising, on-demand appointments, financial aid appointments, troubleshooting with enrollment services, or getting assistance with enrollment services, or the utilization of our computer lab here at the center. All of the QR codes I listed here are on our front door and on our website, on different flyers, so that students can immediately access the registration for all of these services that are available to them virtually Monday through Friday and even on Saturdays as well. Students can utilize the center right now for two-hour time blocks to utilize our computer labs for printing, studying purposes, and students have actually been doing so. So I'm very grateful that we've been able to accommodate them in our space here during this time period that we've been remote. Next slide. I'm happy to share that our Success Bound Youth Leadership Academy has been thriving, and I was able to get a testimonial to share this morning from one of our seniors, which I will play in one second, we'll play in one second. But this past summer, we were able to work with our students 100% virtually, and we were able to run the program 100% virtually this summer with the exception of our students juniors who worked with the city of Perth Amboy and the US Census on a major project to really canvas and get our citizens here or residents here in Perth Amboy to sign up for the US Census and understanding the importance of the census and the dollars that are tied to that. So our motto this summer was really Siempre Palante, which in Spanish, it translates into English as moving forward. And our efforts have really gone unnoticed in terms of this partnership between the city of Perth Amboy and the college, and it's been extremely fruitful to provide students with this opportunity where we can support them to become successful learners and motivated students and really think about college and careers, right? Getting them some of these soft skills like time management, goal settings. We help them with their leadership skills and getting them civically engaged. And on the right-hand side, you'll see an amazing list of partners who worked with us this summer to offer internships, whether they were virtual or onsite, to our students. And if we could just press play on the video and hear from one of our seniors that are currently part of our program.
When I first heard about the Success Bound program, I thought it would be an amazing opportunity to experience a new way of learning, helping the community, and having fun all at the same time. I knew that the Success Bound program would be a stepping stone for our future. Being in the program, I've gained characteristics like being a team player and always lending a hand for those who needed it. I've also gained knowledge on what a college class actually feels like. The Success Bound program has impacted me to become the best version of myself. And at times, it did get hard, but with great leaders and peers, it's been an amazing experience thus far. And advice I would give to an incoming Success Bound student would be to expand your horizon. I encourage you to step out of your comfort zone whenever you can. Acknowledge every part of your journey and remember that you have the power to become whoever you want to be.
So I have to say that this video does not encompass all of who Jezebel is, but she is one of 38 students that we were able to work with this summer. And let me tell you, she is one of our rock stars. They all are rock stars. But I definitely will say Jezebel is definitely special. She is interested in becoming an industrial organizational psychologist in the future, and hopefully will come to Middlesex. Next slide. So Success Bound has definitely been working on the backend to expand beyond what our just full program track was. We are slated to start this summer, and our recruitment season has already started for the full program track. We are also collaborating with the YMCA currently to provide an accelerated track for rising seniors, which is actually starting in March, which is right around the corner. And then we've also expanded the Success Bound program to include our ELL learners in Perth Amboy by creating a Palante track. So hopefully this summer, we'll be launching our two tracks in July, but I am looking forward to working with the YMCA and the college to really launch our accelerated track in March later on. Next slide, please. I'm sorry. We also have a peer mentorship initiative that occurred in the summer or was launched in the summer. Our peer mentor program was an idea that happened in a staff meeting, and we were able to pilot this program in the fall semester by hiring two peer mentors, which served as college role models or student ambassadors to provide guidance to our students here while they are working through this remote environment and being able to provide them, you know, assistance in navigating Canvas, self-service, Outlook 365, general assistance with enrollment services, or connecting students back to the Perth Amboy Center with our enrollment services assistants where they can help them even further troubleshoot different things that they need to get through with their coursework, but also connecting students to different parts of the college, including different educational, cultural, and social events that are sponsored by the college. But our mentors are currently working 100% remote. So they're able to provide different office hours or virtual office hours for students and schedule one-on-one appointments with their mentees when different schedules conflict. So it's definitely been a huge plus. They're currently working in our winter session, which is ending this week, but they've been able to work with Professor Johnson, who's our Assistant Director in Advising, and also working with Ashley Castiglia, who works here at the Perth Amboy Center with Student Success. Next slide. And here we have just a couple of pictures of some of our students, including Jezebel, who participated on our Chalkathon this summer at the waterfront. I thank you so much for the presentation, and I can tell you that we're working on so many different things, but I appreciate being able to at least give you a snapshot today of some of the things that we're working on. And I'll definitely answer any questions that you may have at this point.
Any questions, but I have a comment. I think we should, it'd be great if we could keep track of Jezebel and all the others in this program as they advance through the years and also beyond. So a very wonderful, wonderful program. Thank you so much for bringing it to us.
Thank you so much. I will say that we are currently in the midst of tracking our students, even down from Cohort 1, to see where they currently are in life, where are they working, where are they going to school, whether they're here or elsewhere. But I can tell you that all of our students have graduated from the program and have moved on to college 100%. So I definitely applaud all the work behind everyone that assists, especially kudos to the Perth Amboy team and the core teams of Success Bound, and also to all of you that are on this call for supporting the program. I really appreciate it. There's a lot of value here, and the students feel it. They feel the impact of the program, and it's very positive.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Angelo.
We see you clapping, Janine.
Since I am from the Perth Amboy Center, I'm a little biased, so.
You should be.
We had the best.
Okay. Shall we move on? Let's go into the committee reports. Academic and Student Affairs, Mr. Raja.
Chairwoman, we do not have any resolution, but if Dr. Shear has anything special, if she can present.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Actually, we do have one resolution today.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's fine, Mr. Chair. I had emailed you. I'm not sure if you saw my email. We have a resolution for the board to authorize the college to submit our grant proposal for the Securing Our Children's Futures Grant. So our proposal is for $4 million, and it requires a $1 million match for which we have a commitment letter from the county. So again, the resolution is just to authorize us to submit our proposal in February. And I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any additional information.
First to move the resolution.
Mr. Raja, will you hold the resolution?
I would like to make a motion to approve the motion, one resolution.
Seconded by.
Money that dropped in was just huge in holding on. Donations from 3 to 10,000 in those large spurts really helped us survive. And we also had a COVID-19 relief fund to just make sure we kept our administration. We raised about 15,000, no, 19,000 last year.
Someone's got their sound on with the radio in the background. If you can mute themselves, please. Thank you.
Was it seconded?
Not yet, Chairman Power.
Second. Mark Finkelstein.
Who seconded that?
Mark did.
Mark, you got that, Ron? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carried. Thank you. Finance, Mr. Finkelstein.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Malteino, maybe we have the finance report, please.
Good morning, and thank you, Mr. Finkelstein, and thank you, Board of Trustees, for allowing me to speak to you today. There are six finance resolutions. We're requesting the board's approval on all six. On January 13, 2021, the Finance Committee met at 8:30 to discuss various issues consisting of resolutions for contracting vendor payments and planning and other matters at the college. They are contained in the form of six resolutions before you today. In summary, resolutions 1 through 3 consist of purchases and awards under cooperative agreements, exempt purchases and fair and open bid processes for various goods and services, including, but not limited to, computer software, wireless access, audio, and visual classroom equipment, repairs, and printing purchases. And they are contained in 1 through 3 again. Resolution 4 reflects an amendment to an existing contract for emergency tree services that is deemed to be a health and safety issue. Resolution 5 is the request for vendor payments for construction services, architectural services for the campus-wide and the library restroom, and feasibility studies. And finally, Resolution 6 requests the authorization for payment for legal fees related to labor matters as approved by Vice President Heron. That concludes the summary of resolutions. Chair Finkelstein?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Malteino. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolutions 1 through 6.
Seconded.
By Mr. Finkelstein, seconded by Mr. Sika. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions?
Abstention, resolution number one, Madam Chairman.
Madam Chair, abstain, resolution 6.
Got that, Ron?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion is carried with the abstention. Human Resources, Mr. Oris.
Thank you, Chairman Power. Mr. Morgan, you have a report for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, the HR Committee of the Board met and were briefed on nine recommended total items this month, including hires, employment status changes, separations, and miscellaneous compensation. We're recommending the board approve all nine of those items, and I'm happy to answer any questions you and the trustees may have.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Anybody have any questions? Chairman Power, I'd like to make a motion to approve all resolutions in the categories of hires, separations, and miscellaneous.
Seconded, Raja.
Vote by Mr. Oris, seconded by Mr. Raja. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you. General, Mr. Finkelstein.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolutions 1 and 2, please.
No seconded.
Moved and seconded by Mr. Finkelstein and Mr. Mr. President McCormick, these are the resolutions for many resolutions. Would you like to read them, please?
Chairman Power, thank you. It was sad as I read Resolution 1. As Chairman Power said at the outset of our meeting, we lost one of our own here in December. Trustee Samuel Perkey, who loved the college, whose son graduated from the college, died unexpectedly. And so this resolution is in his honor and memory. Whereas the Board of Trustees of Middlesex College has been advised that a trustee and friend, Samuel Perkey, passed away on December 24, 2020. And whereas Samuel Perkey served with distinction as a member of the board from April 4, 2019, until December 24, 2020. And whereas Samuel Perkey provided leadership to the board while serving on the Human Resources Committee. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on this sad occasion, the Board of Trustees extends its sympathies and condolences to the family of Samuel Perkey. And be it further resolved that in order to commemorate his service to Middlesex College, that a certified copy of the resolution be sent to the family of Samuel Perkey. Shall I read the second resolution, Chairman Power?
Please.
The second resolution is in honor of the service of Clarabelle Cortez, who recently resigned her post as a trustee because she was sworn in as a council member in North Brunswick. Whereas Clarabelle Cortez was appointed by the Board of Chosen Preholders of Middlesex County and served with distinction as a member of the Middlesex College Board of Trustees from February 6, 2020 to December 31, 2020. And whereas during her tenure on the college board, Clarabelle Cortez was a member of the Human Resources and Marketing and Public Relations Committees. And whereas Clarabelle Cortez generously volunteered her professional knowledge and insight to the college, enhancing the quality of educational services provided by the institution to the residents of Middlesex County. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Board of Trustees of Middlesex College do hereby recognize and acknowledge their sincere appreciation and gratitude to Clarabelle Cortez for her outstanding contributions, the interest she has shown, and the assistance she has given to the campus community and residents of Middlesex County. And be it further resolved that the members of the Board of Trustees wish Clarabelle Cortez good health and continued success in all of her future endeavors.
Thank you very much. Mr. Finkelstein, would you kindly approve the, move the resolution for the board?
Yes. Can we first have a motion to approve Resolution number one?
Make that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gary.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote, of course, carried.
Aye.
Second resolution.
Now, motion to approve Resolution number two, please.
Second, Raja.
Mr. Raja, approved, seconded by.
Mr. Sika.
Mr. Sika?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Report of Council. Report of Council.
I'm sorry, I was muted. There's no report, Madam Chairperson.
Thank you. President's Report.
Good morning to all, and January's additional time, at which we look back and look forward. And so we'll do that today, beginning by looking back. I'm gonna look back at the annual year of 2019, 2020, which actually ended in June. And you should have received in the mail recently this beautiful annual report that, again, Michelle's team put together that highlights the accomplishments of our students, alumni, faculty, and staff over the 1920 annual year. Next slide, please. Next slide. We also had several things happen in December that I haven't had a chance to report to you on yet. So we have several honor societies here at the college. The Capa Delta Pi Education Honor Society is one of the more recent additions, and they had their induction ceremony in December. And you see the signing faces of students there, along with faculty advisor Melissa Louise in the top center at that virtual event. Next slide. We also are in the middle of our Middle State Self-Study Process. This is a photo of the amazing Steering Committee team, led by Vice President Linda Scher, Professor Jennifer Appleby, and Dean Megan Ali. And they wrapped up their work, got the report submitted on time on January 15, and now we're awaiting the visit by a site team in late February and early March. More to come on that. Next slide. And then also the fall semester, of course, wrapped up. And this is a photo of a student in Jane Lasky-McPherson's English Comp 2 class. On the last day of class, all the students held up to the cameras on Zoom, handwritten thank you notes to Professor Lasky-McPherson for the work she did in keeping them going virtually all semester. I heard from many faculty, similar things happen with their students, expressions of gratitude. But even during a pandemic and a switch to virtual learning, we've managed to keep our students engaged and on the path to earning their degree. Next slide. So looking ahead, next slide. So we had, again, as you heard yesterday, our first and hopefully only purely virtual convocation. I am on the stage, and again, many thanks to Michelle Campbell and the Media Services Team for making the beautiful video. And if you haven't had a chance to see it, the link I sent to you is still active for a while. You can look at the video and hear about all the things that we were doing in the fall, plans for the spring, and how we're going to continue now as Middlesex College into the future. Next slide. We received a new grant. So there's an acronym in higher ed called DIPSY, the Fund for Improvement of Post-Secondary Education. Those grants went around since the 70s, and they're hard to get. So this is a photo of Marilyn Ochoa, our Director of Library Services, has been at the college now about four years, I think. And she had the audacity to think that we could get one of these national grants. And she worked with her colleagues around the state, put together a consortium grant with three other community colleges and Rowan University. And we put it in, not expecting to get it, because only four grants were given in the entire country. There were over 100 applications. We were one of the four consortiums that got a grant. So kudos to Marilyn and her team. The grant is focused on open textbooks, part of our ongoing focus on open educational resources to make resources available to students for classes at a low cost or free. And so the consortium will develop over the next three years. I think it is 12 different textbooks in different fields. And so we're going to share the five colleges, one and a half million dollars. And Marilyn will be the principal investigator leading that charge. I want to comment this, but it's amazing. And kudos to Marilyn and the grants team. Next slide. And of course, on January 1, we changed names. And so we have a new name and a new logo. And it was unveiled yesterday at convocation, but you're on the first to see the official branding and visual identity of the college. More to come on the rollout. It'll take a few months and even a few years to get everything done. But we hope this semester to have new signage at the entrances to our campus and centers and new banners on the Edison campus, and then eventually a lot of other things will follow. So this is the work of a group over the past year, working with Michelle and me and Topright. And I'm really, really thrilled. I believe it's very professional, very collegial. It can do a lot to improve our image in the community, and so more to come on our new identity. But you get to see new logo. We hope to have new swag for the trustees in the next few months as well. And that's the end of the presentation. I just want to say, though, Chairman Power, I share your optimism and enthusiasm. This is a year in which we have an inauguration of a new administration in Washington. Always a day to look forward, and I'm thinking that we have amazing students like Jezebel de Jesus, whom Angelo highlighted in his presentation. And so my optimism really is in our students and the young people. I believe they're going to carry us forward in ways that we're going to be proud of, and will make this country even better than it is now, and carry forward our democratic values into the future.
Thank you, President McCormick. That was a beautiful presentation. It was just, I'm glad you taped it so that others can enjoy it as well. Okay, so do we have any old business to take care of? Okay, do we have any new business?
Chairwoman Power, if I may, I would like to just give a quick update from the New Jersey Council of Community Colleges. As you know, Dr. McCormick and I and Michelle frequent those board meetings. And I had two quick updates. One is that the passage of the CCOG, that's the Free Community College essentially is what it's kind of tagged as, has passed the Senate and the Assembly. It is sitting on the governor's desk, awaiting his signature. He is expected to sign it in the next few weeks. Um, he is expected to sign it in the next few weeks. Um, additionally, the council state budget um always has to put in a funding request uh to the administration as well, and they are asking for an additional ten million dollars in state operating aid, um as they have not seen an increase in over ten years. Uh, so we're going into budget season and just wanted to give you guys a a quick update on some of the work of the community colleges um a- as well as all their pathways and such. And I think Dr. McCormick, yesterday during your convocation, you mentioned some of the work uh related to healthcare and and manufacturing and such, and I think I've updated the board on that in the past. So that's moving forward as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and uh your notes will be included in the minutes of this meeting. Thank you, Chrissy. Appreciate it. Okay, any comment, other comments from the board? Okay, then we will go on. It is now time for public comments. Section seven dot four of the Bylaws governs public participation at board meetings. So pursuant to the provisions of the Bylaws, the following protocols will be observed. Only those individuals who registered at least twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting with the with the Assistant Secretary of the Board will be called upon to address the board. A college staff member will announce your name in order in which you have registered and unmuted you. Please be sure your name appears on Zoom and matches the name you used to register. Purse your comments by announcing your name, municipality and residence and group affiliation. You will have three minutes to speak. Please direct all your comments to me. A college staff member will announce when thirty seconds of your time is remaining, and again, when your three minutes are up. You will be um muted at the end of your comments or after three minutes. Ms. Roa, uh, has anyone registered to address the board?
Chairman Power, we have one individual registered.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Charlie Cradaville has asked for speaking time. His three minutes begin now.
Yes.
Good morning, members of the board, and uh wanted to wish you all a Happy New Year and hope that twenty twenty-one goes a little better than twenty twenty. I uh I have to follow up on some of the things I brought up at your last meeting because I didn't get satisfactory answers. So um, Madam Chair, I believe you've served on this board since nineteen ninety-eight. Nineteen ninety-eight was also the same year that you uh were hired to a position with the Middlesex County Planning Board as a clerk typist. You were paid fifteen thousand dollars a year for that position. You started on September the eighth of ninety-eight and you worked that job for almost a decade until December twelfth, twenty seventeen. I got this information from the county of Middlesex. And of course, now we all know that under NJSA eighteen A colon sixty-four A, uh, the uh rules that are uh in place for who can be a trustee on this board are very clear that you know, the the candidates quote shall not be an employee of a constituent county, meaning the the county that the the college is based in. So um, given that inconsistency with the law, that uh, you know, you were simultaneously a county employee and uh on this board for such a long period of time, I just have to ask some simple questions. I hope you can answer them. Uh, it's just need to know, when did you become aware of uh that statute and, you know, the the inconsistency, uh, the non-compliance? And what did you do when you found out?
Mr. Cradaville, uh, John Hoffman, the attorney, I can answer those questions for you. Number one, there there was a question as to whether there is a conflict or not because the planning board is separate in the county. And we looked at that and we advised Chairman Power, there was a question, but to be cautious, it would probably be in our best interest to resign from one of the positions. She elected to resign from a paid position to continue with the college as chairman in a non-paid position. And that was, that happened in the November, December timeframe, I believe it was two thousand and seventeen. So there is no, there is, there was a question whether there is a conflict, but once she resigned, there obviously is no conflict whatsoever now.
Okay, and Mr. Hoffman, you found out about this potential conflict uh from Maureen Lawrence, is that correct?
I believe I did. I believe it was either from her or from uh the past president. I'm not sure which one.
Okay, the the reason I ask is, of course, the lawsuit brought by Maureen Lawrence, that was one of the items in the lawsuit that she uh, you know, claimed she was doing her job of of compliance, bringing this to the county and college's attention. And uh, you know, you've said in the past, the allegations in the lawsuit are false, but that one appears to be true. What in her uh cases is not true then?
I'm not sure what you say not true. The reason that she was not renewed was not because of that. That was what I said. That is what I said to you. She was not re- not renewed because of another, not renewed, not because of that reason.
Okay, and I guess that, you know, I'm concerned because that wasn't the only conflict she raised. She also raised concerns about Mr. Finkelstein's role at the ESCNJ. And she also stated that uh Ms. Power, um, you know, didn't didn't take kindly to this being pointed out to her.
Thirty seconds remain.
And and I just wanted to know if Ms. Power can speak for herself for just a moment about uh, you know, what her reaction was to this uh, you know, uh, compliance issue and and whether, you know, the accusations in that lawsuit are correct that uh.
Let me clarify something on Mr. Finkelstein. Mr. Finkelstein asked our firm to do a conflict. We we reviewed it and determined that because it's a nonprofit organization and he's not paid anything, there wasn't a conflict. He, however, determined he would recluse himself for any decision. The college benefits by vying through this cooperative. He recluses himself and there is no conflict. So there was absolutely no merit whatsoever to that claim.
I just want to be clear when you say he's not, he's not.
Your time is concluded.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I just asked if he's paid by the ESCNJ or not. Did you say he's not paid by ESCNJ?
No, I I'm not sure where he's paid by right now.
Your time is concluded.
Thank you. Are there any other um people from the public?
No, Chairman Power.
Okay. So um as we have no further business to conduct this morning, the board is adjourned until our regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday, February seventeenth, twenty twenty-one at eight thirty AM uh at a location by means of a virtual access. How may I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move, Madam Chairman.
And seconded by.
Rajah.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to adjourn this meeting and God bless America.
Amen.
Thank you all.
Have a good month.
Watch the, watch twelve o'clock meeting.